A meeting hosted by Zoom. First on our agenda is a public hearing continued. All regional recyclers of Wood LLC site plan special permit 104 Worcester Street. Neil, we'll turn this over to you.
Thanks. For the record, again, to introduce ourselves, Neil Marcus, Kona Wolf, PZ, on behalf of the applicant. When we adjourned the last meeting, hopefully you're still there. People have disappeared from my screen.
Okay.
We're still here.
Okay, good. When we adjourned the last meeting, it was really for the sole purpose of waiting for a report from the police commission. That meeting took place actually very shortly after your last meeting. I think it was the end of the same week. And we received the report from the police commission. I talked to Beth earlier this afternoon, and she told me she circulated it to the department, to have it to the whole commission. And basically, it was short and sweet and to the point. It really didn't find any issues with the proposed handling of traffic in and out of the site. So at this point, the applicant has nothing further to add. I might add that I'm not joined tonight by Merrick Clement, who's had a conflict in his schedule. But I assured him that unless the commission thought of any new questions, well, I think we covered all of his issues last meeting. So I'm not going to waste a lot of time, your time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning the police report.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Yeah, we have to reach out to the public first. So if there's anyone that would like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom.
Pat, just note for the record, too, that Ken is here.
Oh, thank you.
This is going to be Patrick? Patrick?
Parafor, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Just, sorry, Pat Parafor, 52 Worcester Street, Buffalo, Connecticut. Just two items that I probably need clarification, just so I can understand it better. I understand the question of the distance of the due to, we have to go by exactly how the amendment was written and not how it was meant. So in the amendment, it says this must be an accessory use. So based on the traffic study stating that it's only five additional vehicles, because the other vehicles, the other use will be limited or lowered, does that not change this to the main use, to accessory use? Last meeting, I had asked for how this was determined to be accessory use. And Mr. Our attorney Marcus stated, and I'm paraphrasing from memory, it's the amount of material on site. The amount of material for the recycle would be about 2,500 yards versus the mulch would be 1,200 yards. Area being utilized, the area for this use is a lot more than the mulch. And then it's also profit margin. Again, just really paraphrasing, I may be incorrect. But if you're reducing drastically the amount of the mulch business, does that, again, that's definitely, you don't do that to lose money. So the profit margin, I'm sure, is higher on the recycle side than it is on the mulch side. So I'm curious how this is still considered accessory use and how that would be in compliant. And then the other thing that I keep asking, and I might have missed it, but it says this must be contained in a building. It's pretty specific on there. I don't know if there's any type of zoning regulations for sheds or containers. But nine of the 19 items that are approved for this site would be outside the 8,000-foot building. Again, that's including the scale, because it says all the stores sorting, sorting, separating, and shipping construction debris. So everything has to be in that one building. Again, if we're going exactly what it says, how is this? This isn't contained in one building. So how is the other nine items that are outside the building being allowed? And I appreciate all the time that the committee members have donated or devoted to hearing this. I know it's been almost a year. So I appreciate all the work that you have done, as well as Mr. Marcus as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll wait to see if any other members of the public have questions, and Neil can respond all at once. Is there anyone else that has any questions?
I don't see any hands raised.
All right. Neil, we'll turn this over to you to respond to Patrick's questions.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure, and I may have misunderstood him. Originally, we were here to discuss the police commission report. Is he saying that this issue came up before the police commission as to whether this was an accessory use? I didn't see that in their minutes, but I was at the meeting. So I'm not sure what, but assuming for a second that he's off on a different subject, I'm happy to address it.
He is off on a different subject.
Yeah, I respect the fact that originally, we said we'd like to limit this to the police report. But because I don't think the police had any issue with whether this was an accessory use or a primary use. So going back to where we had this discussion, a meeting or two ago, the definition of an accessory use should be a definition contained in the zoning regulations. If it's not in the zoning regulations, which it's not in Bethel, and quite honestly, it's not in a lot of towns. We use, the term accessory use is used all across the board in the Danbury area. But very few towns actually define specifically what an accessory use is. So basically, they leave that literally to enforcement. And the zoning enforcement officer is the one who has to go out and inspect the use of the property and say, you know, you have to cease using it because you're no longer an accessory use or sign off and say that this is accessory. So in the towns that I've dealt with, we've met with the department and determined what information they're going to need. Now, on this site, I suggested before, and I'll do it again. One measurement is how much of the actual site is devoted to each use? Well, I got to tell you, the use that we're asking for now is completely contained within an 8,000-square-foot building. That is the sorting and the recycling and the shipping of the construction debris. It's a construction material recycling. That's a pretty small portion of the site, if you do your geometry. So the first criteria you'd say is, is it a large area of the site? And the answer is no, it's a very small portion of the site. Right now, the bulk of the site is used for wood recycling, and that will continue. The new area is defined on your map. You've seen them. It's up at the top of the site in an area that doesn't currently have any much use. Then the next question is, the other way to determine it, if it were a retail store and you said you could sell a certain type of item as an accessory to other items. So for example, if a shoe store could sell gloves as an accessory, but it wouldn't be a shoe store if it sold all sorts of clothing items, then you would say, I want to see your glove sales compared to your shoe sales. And if you get more than 50% or 35% or 40%, or whatever number you feel comfortable with as your gross sales. And Patrick was using the word profits. It is very difficult to do this on profit, because profit is determined by a lot of factors, including what your payroll is and how you control your payroll and things like that. So generally, it would be based on a gross sales. And you would make a determination as to when your gross sales may be exceeding. That's another way of doing it. The other way, of course, of doing it is to look at actual traffic. So you could say, I want, Beth would say, I want a report at the end of the day as to how many vehicles are on your site recycling wood, wood product, like they did before this permit was issued. And I want to know how many vehicles are on your site with construction debris. And if she determines, for example, that whether 50% of the traffic is one or the other, that's a criteria she could use, too. So at the end of the day, to answer your question, Pat, there's no hard and fast rule unless the commission now wants to amend regulations. Of course, it wouldn't apply to this application. But going forward, where they actually make a determination of the definition of what accessory is. Otherwise, as I say, we go back to the common dictionary language use of the word. And accessory is something that is incidental to, you know, something that is, oftentimes, we say it's compatible with. The way you would define that word in the dictionary is the way that the commission will have to make a determination. But in reality, the commission will never know whether it's an accessory use until the use is actually up and running. Because at the moment, it's, everything is a projection. And of course, I agree with what Pat is saying. Rob Ribdick is doing this because he thinks, A, there's a market for it. B, he can actually, you know, employ people and still make money. I mean, for all the reasons that we entered any business venture. So yeah, I'm hoping that he's doing it to make a profit. But at the end of the day, if the sale of 10% of your goods contributes 80% of your profits, that doesn't necessarily switch the 10% to the primary use of the property. It's a test, a test that is multifaceted. And ultimately, we expect that Beth or the zoning enforcement officer, whoever it is at the time, will come up with criteria and do a monitoring, and there'll be some reporting. So that's how you do it. Otherwise, you're just guessing. But if you, the best way here, by the way, I'll go back to before I just concluded, the best way here is to look at the site and say, how much of the site is for one type of recycling? And how much of the site is the other? And on that test, we're clearly an accessory use.
Thank you, Neil. All right. I'd like to move to commission members for any questions, if I may. Kitty, I'll start with you.
I'm sorry, I lost my paperwork. Go to the next person.
Ken?
I'm all set.
Okay, Bob Legnard.
Just for the record, Neil talked about the police report. And it was Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, that they met. And that, we are in possession of that report. And as far as the percentage of the property, I think we have to go with, you know, what the projection is by the owner as to what percentage it's going to be in use of the property. At some point, if he goes over that percentage, you know, that percentages that Neil has presented to us, then we would have to have the zoning enforcement officer look into that. But that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Bob. Penny?
Hi, everybody. Neil, thank you. I'm still concerned about the safety issue of the right turn out of the property onto Worcester Street. Sorry, it's been a really long day. Onto Worcester Street. They're all long days. What day is today? Onto Worcester Street, which can then go either onto Durant or continue around onto the residential part of Worcester Street. Neil, has there been any consideration given to making it a left exit only out of the property onto Worcester heading in the other direction?
Do I take that question now?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Penny, I thought we were clear at the last meeting, or maybe we weren't, that we would design and post the site for no left turns.
You mean no right turn?
No right turn.
No right turn, okay.
Left only, no right. But my question is, do you want to limit that to large vehicles or include all vehicles? So for example, if you were taking stuff over in the back of your SUV that you, you know, that you wanted to, just for its debris, you wanted to, you know, you wanted to recycle, would you then have to go left out of there when, you know, you drive a small vehicle? Either leave that up to the commission, but we will post no right turns. And we could say for vehicles larger than so many thousand pounds, I mean, we could clearly make it for trucks as opposed to cars and SUVs. That we've agreed to. Again, subject to the fact that the police commission doesn't have a problem with it, because they didn't require it. And I'm thinking, knowing the Bethel Police Commission a little bit, that they would have no objection. So we've agreed to that. We're just waiting for some guidance as to whether it's across the board or limited to large trucks.
Okay, thank you. And my answer, by the way, based on what I see coming out of Carolusse's and what I see also going in and around the new Carolusse wine and liquor store. If one, and this is obviously commission-driven, but if one were to make it okay for some cars and not okay for other cars, I guarantee you, it's going to be used. Then that makes the whole thing moot, because we see what goes on outside of Greenwood Avenue. Anyway, thank you, Neil. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Penny. Kitty, I'll loop back with you.
Okay, sure. You know, a lot of what I think, I totally agree with Bob. This is something we're not going to know until the site is up and running. I see in most of the calculations that they're looking for five new trucks in, five new trucks out. I really think that that is dreaming, because there's a tremendous amount of construction and rehome building, you know, going on in this town. And I think people would much rather come to a facility in Bethel than going out to White Street. So I don't know how in our stipulations we could put something in that if the traffic is not what it was proposed to be, that there's going to be much more traffic, that we can address this issue at a further date. Because I, you know, as I said, if it does pan out to be, you know, an excellent business, then it's going to have a lot more traffic than we're seeing. And I can't, and we have to have a way to address that. And I'm sure there would be a way in our stipulations to do that right now. There's only one other question I had, and I've been going over, I have a pile of things here. And I never could find an answer to this question. There was somebody from 102 Worcester Street who said that they had processed a number of complaints about noise and dust from the site. Neil, was that ever addressed anywhere? Because I couldn't find it in my notes.
I don't know that we ever saw real noise complaints filed. I think that the way it happened, Penny, and again, if there are complaints on file, we address them. But I don't think, I think there was a complaint, you know, maybe to the police department or maybe even to Beth. And, you know, they're running these heavy machines, you know, during business. And I think somebody said, well, you know, they're allowed to do that from the hours of, you know, 7:30 to 5:00 or whatever.
But it was the noise and the dust they were talking about. And that was obviously from the recycling of the wood.
It was the business next door. It was the business right next door.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Yeah.
I want to say, many years ago, 102 Worcester Street is an industrial condominium complex with several different businesses in there. When this particular business opened up, I think it was in 2006 or '07, I think there was a stump grinder or something that was used. And it was used very close to the property line, meaning adjacent to 102 Worcester. And I do recall receiving complaints at that time. And I believe, after speaking with the property owner, it was corrected.
Okay, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. The other thing, I just want to make sure, too, is I have written down in my notes, which I have so many. The operation is going to be Monday through Friday, 7 to 4. Saturday, 7 to 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. That's our proposed hours, yes.
You know, I'm looking at this map here. And there are, let's say, right below the 8,000-square-foot building, there are, there is I, A, M, H, H, K, all of these dumpsters or bins. Are they going to remain outside or are they going to be inside the building? On your side, Lynn?
The areas outside are covered, well, you'll call them dumpsters. They're actually covered containers that are like little sheds.
But they're going to be all outside?
The ones that we show, the ones that are shown are going to be outside. The rest of the storage, all the work is going to be done inside, but material will be stored in storage sheds.
Okay. And you are going to accept a lot of the same things that are, that our transfer station takes for free, such as mattresses, electronics, metal, all the things that the Bethel transportation takes right now for, you know, at no cost, because it's state mandated? Those are items you're going to accept as well?
I'm hoping Rob Ribdick is on the call.
I am.
Yes.
Oh, good.
I don't want to say anything that you're more familiar with your operation than I am. But it's my belief is we will accept those items because they fall under our permit.
Yes, but not the electronics so much as the, you know, the other things, the construction debris, the asbestos, and the, you know, the abatement of the asbestos and properly disposed of asbestos.
I understand. I was talking about mattresses.
The mattresses, we would accept. Those were those containers that would come into play. Those would be put in containers and shipped out separately, as would tires, metals, concrete, stuff that we would not typically send out in trucks, that we would separate in the building. So those would be the materials that would bring to other recycling facilities, like earth movers would get the concrete. Dell's or whoever else is a local metal recycling company would take the metal. The tires would go to a specific facility. All the things that we typically get but aren't allowed to bring to the landfill or have availability to sell, as in the metal, would go to certain facilities. And those, that's what those containers are out there for. They would be covered, covered containers.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me today.
Okay, thanks, Kitty. Rich Tibbetts?
Muted.
Hey, no, I'm good. Sorry, I walked away for a second to eat a carrot. Sorry, I'm trying to make dinner. I'm multitasking. I'm good. I'm good, everybody. Thanks.
Come over shortly.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Rob Wallace? Rob?
I've got a motorcycle going by behind me, so that, I was on mute there. Neil, thank you. I don't really have any questions for you. Kind of like Kitty, I find that traffic report to be shockingly low. And I wonder if that's because I'm a new guy to this. Maybe somebody could tell me how that number is arrived at. The only way that makes sense to me is if it's on an annual basis, you know, it's averaged out over the course of the year. And construction being, you know, a seasonal business, it's obviously being busier in, you know, in the warmer months than, you know, the active months. So is that an annual total or is that averages out?
Neil, do you want to answer that?
I'll take, I'll take that. Rob, the traffic report is based on average daily, daily averages, daily averages. So it is annualized, because, you know, you're right. They don't, they don't take into consideration that, you know, around Christmas time, construction really slows down. And in the winter, it's not as much as in the summer. So that's kind of an annualized. But, you know, what you got to understand is that the contractors don't go recycle every day. So, and I say this because that's, my son works with Christian Decunia, a former local Bethelite, grew up in Bethel. But he, his construction company, and what they do is, they will, they'll have a day where they clean the site. And that's, everything is left on the site that they're working on. And that's when everything is loaded into the debris trailer, construction debris trailer, whatever you call it, and taken. So even though you got a lot of construction going on, these guys don't run to the facility more than once every week or two. I mean, they just, they gather up their stuff and then they bring it over. So it's not as much traffic based upon the, if you look at the building permits that are outstanding in Bethel, you'd say, wow, there are all these building permits out. You know, you're going to have all these people there every day. That just doesn't occur. You'll have all those people there once a month, maybe. So, and the guys that do the traffic report use the I T E, it's to traffic engineers, yeah, the I T E guidelines. So they, for these facilities. But what you're missing, and I don't want to be misleading, we talk about additional traffic. We do anticipate that some current traffic is going to fall off, because some of our operation is no longer going to be concentrated on recycling wood. And that, that, there are people, for example, who are going to come less frequently because there's, the site's busy recycling construction. You got to wait for a while. You don't want to do that. So with, all of this is built into those numbers, that operationally, the current traffic is going to go down from the current use, but up for the new use. And the net effect of that is going to be about five trips a day. And again, we don't feel uncomfortable with that, because the numbers that we currently have are pretty accurate. We know how many, what you got in that report in terms of current traffic is actual people in and out of the site, you know, averaged for the last year or two. You know, it's a period, good period of time. So I don't want you to think that traffic, traffic numbers are somewhat estimated. They're not always actual, but they're pretty close here. And as I say, and I'm going to go back to the comment, you know, that Kitty said, which is related to what you're saying. And that is if the traffic situation changes, then I think that the control of traffic might, you might warrant a review if that's the case. But I don't think that's going to happen. We're never going to put a traffic light there. But we may need, at some point, in reality, if you go up to Halandia on a busy weekend in the summertime, not all year round, but a busy weekend in the summer, they got a traffic control out in the street there, because they're just that busy. So if that's the case, that we have, you know, a period of time that we need traffic control, we'll put it in. But at the moment, that would be wishful thinking. This site is not big enough to handle that traffic. It really isn't. It's a small operation. So hopefully, it'll make you feel a little better. What my question is, why is the motorcycle running behind you on a beautiful night tonight and you're sitting here? That's my question.
I don't.
Bob, anything else?
Nope, that's it for me. Thank you, Neil. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Linda, are you on mute?
Yep, I'm unmuted now. My concern is that I saw the drawings for the system of containment for potential contaminants inside the building, and it looked very substantial. However, knowing that accidents do happen and that some of these dangerous items might fall outside of the building, as far as I heard, there was no plans to As far as I heard, there was no plans to upgrade the current, um, groundwater containment system. So whatever goes in there is just going to leach out into the soil. Is that correct?
Let me try that one too, Linda. It's Neil Marcus again. The, the, what you're suggesting is that somebody is bringing debris which has some sort of toxic material contained in it. And that it's going to fall on the ground outside of the 8,000 square foot building. But of course, we're assuming that on the trip to, through Bethel, wherever, wherever it's going, it didn't fall out of the truck. Because between you and me, you know, you, you don't see it as much now, but years ago, you used to see trucks that were very poorly loaded. The tarps were terrible, people, people didn't really do much. But now the police have gotten a lot more serious about, uh, about citing people for illegal loads. So people tarp and try to keep things contained better. But you're assuming that they get to our site and they're going to drop something on the ground and it's going to sit there for days while it rains and we're not going to do anything about it. And it's going to run into our drainage system. The likelihood of that happening is just too remote to really think about, seriously. I know it sounds like, well, stuff's going to drop on the ground and get into the drainage. It doesn't. I mean, clearly, if a truck is coming in and it's dropping material out going up the driveway, the people, the operators, or Rob himself, uh, isn't going to let that stuff just sit there. It'd be, actually, the person bringing it is going to get stopped and say, pick up your load and throw it back on your truck. Uh, so I, you know, in, in the, it's a pretty remote possibility that what you're worried about. But anything that does get soaked or wet and leaches out inside the building gets picked up within a contained catchment facility, you know, drainage facility.
Drainage.
And it actually gets pumped out into a truck and disposed of as hazardous waste. Much like all the garages do with their waste oil now. I mean, yeah, that's a perfect example. I mean, the garages, you have waste oil tanks inside. You know, every once in a while, you're going to get somebody whose car is leaking a lot of oil, sitting there waiting to get into the bay. It's on the ground outside. But I mean, basically, if that's the case, you're going to say the operator has to get out there and clean that up when he sees it immediately. And that's usually happens. So it's a pretty remote concern and I think we've covered it. Uh, and again, if it is stuff like just regular truck and car oils and droppings, that's all picked up, as, as Merrick had explained, in the catch basins that have the, the oil-water separators. And you just have to clean it. I mean, it, the both, the, the best management of, of this environmental concern is just good practices. That's it. I mean, if you, if you're, if you're, if you're inspecting and you're maintaining, then you're not going to have a problem. So I, I, I will think that, you know, that your concern is, is something is very, very remote.
Accidents do happen and because it is backed up by the Bethel Land Trust and by wetlands, it is a concern.
I know, I agree. I mean, and by the way, there's none of us sitting at this meeting tonight who hasn't gone down the road and seen things fall off of a vehicle, uh, and said, oh my God. You know, of course, you hope you don't get hit by it if you're the car behind it. But people do, accidents do happen. But if it's on this site, it's easily observable and quickly containable, clearly.
Well, we, we can hope so.
I can assure you of that one. I mean, I, by the way, the guy who's, I'm looking at him in the video screen here. The guy who's going to do that is, is the guy who knows that his operation from the state perspective, I mean, forget you guys for a second, I know you're concerned. But the, the bigger, the, the, the bigger control is the state. They come down and inspect these places and if they're unhappy, they're going to let them know. And by the way, the history of this application, before you, the history of some of the earlier citations were just that, sloppy housekeeping. And we corrected it. It doesn't go on anymore.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Linda?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Rob Stoll?
Uh, I have no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions. Beth, any, uh, further questions?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, can you see any reason why we can't close this hearing tonight?
Pat, Pat, I have one more question.
Yes, Bob?
Uh, the, the issue of whether to take a right or a left turn out of that driveway, would that affect the, uh, the mulch business at all if, if we put up a left turn only by a certain weight limit?
No, I don't believe so.
I don't think so, no.
I don't believe so, no.
I just wanted to make sure of that before we-
No, the only, the only big trucks really that were coming out of the 100 yarders were all going to Ferris's yard over in, uh, Danbury. And, uh, he did some cleaning for me in October of last year. And I believe he took out, you know, 50 trucks in one five-day week. So, and they all went to his properties, wherever they, I believe they all went to the Danbury property. So they all went left anyway. And there's no problem with the trailer trucks going left anyway because they're going to be going to I-84. 100% of the time, they'll be going to I-84.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, I'm going to pose the question to the commission, um, about closing the hearing. If I may say, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? This, this hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've got to leave you for a Danbury zoning meeting, but Rob, you can hang around and hear what the next part of the agenda is. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Neil.
Good night, Neil.
Good night.
Take care.
All right, so moving on to our business meeting, I'm going to seat Linda for Steve Duchell. Uh, if I may have a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of May 12?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Was that you, Bob?
I'd like to know, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Next on our agenda is all regional recyclers of Wood LLC, site plan special permit, 104 Worcester Street. This is open to commission comments. Or whoever would like to start.
I think that's Rich.
It is. My kid's playing Fortnite. Hang on.
His children are running away from, running away from dinner.
Must not be good.
Yeah, yeah.
You need a couple more kids.
No, no, thank you, sir.
Rich, do you have any, uh, comments for this?
No, I have no additional comments.
Okay. Anyone next?
It's Penny. And, um, I go back to, my, my entire issue is with safety. And the safety and the serenity and the health and welfare of the families that live in the residential part of Worcester. Is it true that the decision to left-hand turn only is something that comes down from the commission? Or from, where, where does that come from?
Beth, do you want to answer her question?
What I would do is, um, there, it's, it's a two-fold, uh, in my experience. You could make that condition if you choose to approve the application. So say you want a left-hand turn only output. Well, I would take that information. I would go to the traffic authority, which is the police department. I would also speak to the traffic authority for the applicant, get the two together, go out in the field, talk with them and figure out the signage placement enforcement aspects of it. Because signs are great, but it's, if there's follow-through with the signage and enforcement with the signage, that's the only way it's going to work.
Exactly.
And that would involve the cooperation of the police department.
Is that something that we request? Is that, how does that work?
Well, that is something that, if it was a, like, that, I, what I just explained to you would be if you chose to make a condition on the approval, you want a left-hand turn only sign, you want those big trucks going out the left-hand, making left-hand turns only. It would be worded in such a way that it would say, with the consultant, consulting, consulting of the traffic authority of the town, you know, I would get into more detail. Wouldn't just be the commission wants the left-hand turn only.
Could it, could it be more specific? I don't want to interrupt Penny, but like, yeah, the one coming out of, of Caroloozy's. It doesn't say per Bethel P, PD department. It just says no, no turn, no, uh, left-hand turn. Could we make it that it was, uh, that the Bethel Police Department would be on there? So people would realize that we're in that business?
I would, again, what I would do is I would put all the parties together, all the traffic people together.
Okay.
Come up with a solution, bring it back to you guys. I mean, just to make you more comfortable about any condition that you made in regards to that.
Okay, thanks, Beth. That, that's it.
Okay, that may be something we should do at Caroloozy's because you're right, Penny. I sat right next to somebody who made a left-hand turn.
Okay.
And I put my hand up to say, no, 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 I got the finger.
Oh, yeah, I've had that.
Let's go.
I've had that a bunch of times.
Um- Let's go to Caroloozy's, excuse me, once I-
Yeah, please.
Let's go to Caroloozy's because one of the, you guys had concerns with that to begin with.
Yes, we did.
And guess what? We get to revisit that in 12 months from the CEO of that bill.
Ah, okay.
And this, yeah, and Caroloozy's is a whole other-
Right.
-conversation, but, but yeah.
Because of your concerns, you added that to, to your resolution.
Right, because of that.
Thank you for the comment.
Okay, I'm done.
Thanks, Penny.
For the time that I've been quarantined, so to say, here, every time I go downtown, I look at that driveway, that back driveway.
Yeah.
To this day, I probably have been down there probably 50 or 60 times. Car taking a left turn out of that back driveway. I've seen many ones take it out of the front driveway. When I was on the police commission, we talked about that sign of no left turn onto Greenwood Avenue. And the consensus was at that point in time, by the police commission, by everybody concerned, was that left-hand turn sign is coming off of private property. That's different than the left-hand turn sign coming out of Rector Street. The one coming out of Rector Street is enforceable by the police a, as a no-left turn sign. Today I saw a tractor trailer going up, uh, a, 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 around the glass place. Came out of Library Place, across the intersection, made all the cars move. So, you know, we, we have to, we have to say, you know, some of it is on the, you know, on the drivers themselves. As to what, you know, i- i- if, if somebody's going to do something unsafe, they're going to do it no matter what sign we put up there. But if we put a sign up there about a left-hand turn out of, out of there, only a left-hand turn, I think, you know, that's, that's denying the people that are coming in there. And like, does that stop the car that comes in with a trunk full of stuff from going right? We have to be very, you know, specific about what we want to stop going right and what we want to stop going left. It is a public road.
That's why Neil talked about the size of the trucks that would be going out and turning left at that.
I think that has to be very specific.
I'm sorry?
That has to be very specific in whatever we determine here.
Absolutely.
What trucks you're talking about. That's why I asked the question about, you know, the mulch trucks going out there. A guy going out with a pickup truck, truck full of mulch, it's going to, you should be able to make a right turn out of there. But the guy coming out with a tractor trailer full of mulch should go the other way.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why you said we have to take a look at the size of the vehicle.
Uh, that's a very good thought. That's good. I agree with that.
All right, um, any other comments?
I just have another question for the, you know, my, the commission members here. So back to the, the traffic study again, if it, if we're okay with, uh, I'm getting a lot of static. Is everybody else heard that?
Somebody.
No.
You're okay?
Here, here.
Okay, it just got really static to me, sorry. So I'm assuming that, you know, that, I mean, five cars per, uh, you know, per day is additional is not that big of a deal. What would the commission feel if it was two or three times that number, 10 or 15?
It doesn't.
Right? So, and that's why I asked Neil about the seasonality of construction and whether it was an annual, number or not, you know, that averages out traffic over the course of the year. I, I, I have no idea where that puts us, but I think, you know, worth taking into consideration that if they're, if it is based on an annual average, in, including the slow season, and they're saying five, it could be easily 10, um, and, and maybe more. So it's just something for us to, to consider.
Well, you're right, Rob. That, that's why I brought up the numbers before. I mean, I, I, three times a week, I, I used to go down, um, down White Street, uh, into Danbury and go past, uh, what was, what was Winter Brothers, oh, it's, what is it, Oak Ridge or something now?
Yeah.
And sometimes the traffic between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock was mind-boggling. So my point was, if we have a place in Bethel that will now take demolition, wouldn't it be that much more attractive not to have to go to White Street? And will, will that increase the numbers on Worcester Street even more? So I think that's something we have to watch and, and be careful of.
Okay, one thing I just want to speak about in, in, in relation to what Rob is saying. Number one, I think it's, it's, in this I can do for the commission, um, even though the public hearing is closed, I can get a little bit more clarification on the, on its five per day, the annual, how exactly they came up with the five per day from their traffic engineer. Um, so I will do that and give that to you at the next meeting. But just speaking in regards to the business that already exists there, mulch business per se. So you look at a mulch business, it's been there for 10, 20, 15 years, whatever.
Right.
It's, there's nothing really going on in the wintertime. There's a lot of seasonal activity going on in the spring. And I have seen in the fall, when we've had hurricanes, things of that nature, when we have severe storms, an increase in activity on the property, which is unexpected. That gives you an idea of activity that already exists there. So again, dealing with the traffic of what exists is difficult to really come out with without doing a hardcore of observation and monitoring on a daily basis by a traffic engineer.
Now, that would be good, Ben, because I, I had said to Neil, I thought that, but only increasing by five more trucks was not usable at all.
So, you know, what I'm saying is five per day, that is probably an average on a yearly basis, depending on the season and what exactly is going on. For example, God forbid if there was a hurricane, houses were damaged, we, a tornado, things of that nature, you would see an increase in construction debris going to the site.
Sure, like back in 2011, I mean, those places were non-stop humming. But that's unusual.
So I'll, I'll, I'll get that for, for you, Bob.
Yeah, it would just be good to know in general how they arrived.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Okay, will do.
Um, Beth, I have a comment that, uh, looking at Chuck's May 7th letter, talking about principal and accessory use. He indicated in this case, section 4 dot 3 dot M dot 4 provides that the storage use must be accessory to an allowed principal use and located in a building that does not exceed 8,000 square feet. So does this mean that the bins we have outside, that they're part of the accessory use? Should they be moved and stored in the building? So all accessory material is within that 8,000 square feet?
Okay, so you're talking about regulation itself. To any of the indoor storage sorting, separating and shipping of construction debris. So it's the indoor, is that your question? The indoor sorting, separating and shipping?
Well, and, and that any storage that's accessory to an allowed principal use should be located in a building not to exceed 8,000 square feet. As those containers, or sheds as we refer to them, are part of this accessory use, should they not be inside the building?
Are you asking me for my opinion?
Yes.
I mean, I would just, I, I can give you a literal, my opinion as far as looking at it from a literal interpretation is that the, the bins are being used, someone is coming in with debris. Those bins are being used for storage of part of that debris.
Correct.
Correct.
So, therefore, that debris should be, that storage should be contained within the 8,000 square feet.
Can we, can we make that a condition of the approval?
You certainly can make anything a condition of approval.
Okay. That's what I would like to do, is have that be a condition.
So, you want everything pertaining to the accessory use contained within the 8,000 square feet?
Right, as Chuck spelled it out to us on May 7.
Okay. I don't, again, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I'd be more than happy to.
That's okay. That's okay. Any other comments?
I have a comment or a question.
Hey, Rob.
I seem to recall, Beth, that you had sent us some time ago, a document about accessory uses. Do I recall that properly?
I don't recall, Rob, off the top of my head.
That might have been Chuck's letter.
It was probably Chuck's letter, with the interpretation.
Possibly, yeah, I'm trying to find it on my computer right now.
That's the May 7 letter, Rob.
No, this was long before, this was quite a while ago.
Would it have been in relation to this? Was it in relation to this, though, or was it in relation to the crematorium? Because we're in the middle of that court case, and maybe...
That might have been it. Anyway, while I was looking for that, I also found another document that talks about the treatment of accessory uses. It's actually entitled, "Treatment of Accessory Uses in Land-Based Classification Standards." It was put out by, oh goodness, it was put out back in December of 1997 by Legacy Resources, which is, I think, a legal firm. But I think we might, it might be worth our while to take a look at this, just to, because this is what this permit is all about, is not accessory use.
Excuse me, Rob?
Yeah.
Was that submitted during the public hearing? It's part of this record?
Not to my knowledge.
Can't look at it.
Can't look at it anymore.
We can't look at it because we closed the hearing.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not something that really should be, you as an individual can certainly use your own resources, but it is not something that should be part of this record at this time, Rob. I'm sorry. All right? Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
No.
All right, if I may have a motion for Beth to prepare an approval for this application?
We'll move.
We have time possibly to discuss it further. Do we really want?
Needs to be discussed further, Kitty.
I'm sorry?
What do you think needs to be discussed further?
I haven't finished, I started going over all of my notes today, and I'm not done.
Well, I have the right to discuss, but you can't reopen the public hearing.
No, I'm not saying reopen, but I mean, just for general discussion between us. Maybe not. All right.
All right, let me make a suggestion. May I make a suggestion, Pat?
Yes, of course.
You had some discussions tonight in dealing with traffic signs, dealing with, just getting a really clear understanding on the five annual trips. Is it annual? Is it daily? How is that determined? And the storage itself, how that should be taken place. Why don't I take those three items, put something in writing regarding those three items, and get the information that you need, and give you that at the next meeting?
Okay, perfect.
Sounds like a plan.
And that way, Kitty, you will have time to go through your notes, and if you need further discussion, maybe at that point, you can come to a consensus one way or the other.
Sure. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
How does that sound, Penny?
Perfect. Thank you.
Rob, did I get that?
Great. Yep, thumbs up. Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we'll table it until the meeting of the...
23rd?
23rd.
Do-do.
Okay, moving on, work, oh, I'm sorry, moving on, new business, Pierre, two-lot subdivision, 137 Walnut Hill Road.
This is a residential piece across the street from the Walnut Hill Community Church. It's an old white farmhouse, and there is a lot of land to the left of it, and it's a one-lot subdivision. So, my question to you, the application is complete, do you guys want a public hearing on it, or do you want me to just refer to the various departments and report back?
I think, I think your last part, just referring it out, because that's, that's a pretty established area right there anyway, isn't it?
Well, I would make, my recommendation is not to have a public hearing.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Similar two-lot subdivision over on Hollyville Road, the Grana, that you, at this point. So, if you want, I'll refer that out, and they will bend into a presentation at your next meeting on the 23rd.
I don't think it's necessary, but...
That's fine.
Could you, I need a motion to accept it before.
Could someone make a motion, please?
Motion to accept what Beth said about the subdivision at 137 Walnut Hill Road.
No, that's my line.
I know, I know. I couldn't think of the exact text, but you know what I mean, the subdivision...
And as I usually say, Nancy will clean it up.
Yep.
And who seconded this?
Penny.
Thank you, Penny. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on, Planning and Zoning Department report?
My report is pretty simple. It's just trying to keep everybody on task with the amount of applications and hearings that we have coming up. 80 South Street, had a very good technical meeting with Alyssa Valpetti, our consulting architect. We've made some revisions and some changes. I think that you'll be very pleased with them. Minor revisions, but very distinct revisions when you see the changes that they work together on. And that will be coming in on your next meeting on the 23rd, and hopefully, we'll be able to close out that hearing at that point. Then a reminder also that on Tuesday, June 30, is when you start your doubleheader. Oakwoods, Draper, Nine Good Hill Road, and also Shelley Woods on Shelley Road, nine units. In regards to those two applications, you're going to be starting the public hearing in June. I think it was better to start the public hearings, see what people say, see what the applicant says, and then schedule a cycle.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Instead of, instead of having paper in front of you, let's listen to what everybody has to say, and then go out and actually see the site in relation to the traffic.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Because I don't think, unfortunately, I don't think any of us are going anywhere so far in July. Okay. We're busy, a lot of things going on that are great, and I can't really discuss because I don't have them finalized at this point, but we will be talking in the near future. There are a lot of good things coming in in the fall.
Good. All right. Moving on to public input, BJ, I think you're on here at the line?
Oh, wait, let me unmute her. Okay, you're on, BJ.
I don't have anything, but nice to see you all.
Nice to have you with us.
Yes, too.
All right, before we adjourn, are there any commission comments that need to be made or heard? Do you have any questions for Beth?
One question, Beth. When are they going to start the road behind Bethel Foods? Any question, any idea about that?
None.
Okay.
I have not heard from the property owners since they got their CO for the liquor store.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought that was going to be the next, the natural progression, but I guess not.
All right, if there's nothing else, if I may have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Happy Father's Day, gentlemen.
Adios, thank you.
Oh, yeah, happy Father's Day, you guys.
All right.